It's not, don't worry about it, it's okay. We'll work around it.
There's a thing here on the side that usually allows you to do it.
I know, it's, it's the, what do you call it, the Zoom?
I'll text you in a minute.
Okay, don't worry about it.
I'll look at it.
Yeah, I mean, just.
Yeah, I just gonna have to work around it.
There it is.
There it is, okay, 100%. There you go, perfect, thank you.
And you can try to get out even further if you want.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Might be 90%.
Okay. All right, we're ready?
No underwear. No, they're working on something.
Okay, good morning, everyone, and for those who are attending us via other technology means for the March 24th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting, can we have pleasure allegiance by Supervisor Medina?
I salute pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Next, we're gonna go to acknowledge certificate of posting.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Presentations and reconstructions, we have none. Next item on, on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity to address the board items of interest not appearing on the agenda. No action may be taken unless by Government Code Section 54954-2. Also, because we are going through a new means of communicating with the public, you're, you're able to go and have your comments heard to the board supervisors. You'll be limited to three minutes. As usual, please keep your comments brief, to the point, and do not repeat prior testimony so that as many people as possible can be heard. Your cooperation is appreciated. If you are on Zoom computer, stroll to the bottom and select Participants and select, and select the Raise Your Hand icon. If you are on a mobile device, press star nine to raise your hand. Once, once you are list, once we bring up your name, your name will be unmuted and then, and then at that time, you'll be able to speak, but please state your name so we can know who you, who you are. Okay, do we have any speaker cards? None? Dulcet, do we have anyone from the public? Not at the moment?
If anybody wishes to speak, please press star nine now, please.
Or if you're on Zoom, you may.
We got a first speaker here.
It's just an answer.
All right, thank you, Harry. Okay.
Okay.
Are we in public comment now?
Yes, we are in public comment.
Okay, yes, I would, if I can go now or is there like a waiting list?
No, go now.
Okay, thank you. So I am calling to, I want to thank the board of supervisors for having appointed a Public Information Officer. David Westrich has been doing a really fantastic job. So kudos to the board and to David. I would like for the public to know that that is the person to reach out to. I am a little frustrated that we have a mayor that continues to put out information that at times is not onside with what is put out by the Public Information Officer and by the Public Health Department. I'm not sure as, my concern is I'm not sure that the board of supervisors can reel him in. Ms. Care, I know that you're very, you know, you're good friends with him. I don't know if your friendship would have, you know, would allow or accommodate for you to ask him to reel it in. I'm, I'm concerned that the missed messages that are going out there are, are not for the good community. I believe, I believe he believes that he, what he is doing is for the good of the community, but it's, it's the opposite of what's going on. There's a lot of confusion. I get a lot of phone calls, I get a lot of text messages, and I refer it to the correct agency because of the information they're getting out there. But I'm not the only one that's concerned with this. There's plenty of people out there that are concerned with this, and I don't know what we can do about it, but I just want to put it to the board of supervisors in a public comment that it is, it is quite a frustration to, to many members in the community that this is going on. That, that, but I have to stay at the moment, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public speakers? Please press star nine.
We're good? Okay. Now, we will go to department head announcements, Ray?
As of now, we don't have any announcements, other than our county council's office has one.
I was asked. I was asked to read into the record today that there was an error in the background summary portion of the one that pertains to Granite Rock Construction and Granite Construction Company, which is item number eight. In the background section, it says, there's a section that indicates that reject the bid submitted by MCM and is non-responsible and find that Granite Rock to be the lowest responsible bidder, but it actually is Granite Construction Company, but the action item is correct, so there's no needed to change in the action items. So that's just for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, if we can go back to public comments, we did get a lot of emails from the public, and for the record, we're gonna put them in our record. We also received one letter that wishes to, for her letter to be read. At this time, I would like to have that letter read.
We'll, we'll wait for the item, Mr. Chair, if that's.
Oh, it's on the item.
It's for a specific item.
Okay, then we're good then.
Public hearing.
Good, thank you. All right, let's continue with department head announcements.
That's all the announcements that I have, Mr. Chair.
Perfect, thank you. A board announcement, Supervisor Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing today.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Gilio?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. Supervisor Hernandez?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Okay, now we will go to consent agenda. Is there any removal from any of the items? None? And, go ahead.
If any members of the public wish to pull an item from consent, please hit star nine now.
None? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on consent?
Shall move to approve consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you, five zero. Now we go to public hearings.
I need to make a comment before public hearing starts. Before we start public hearing, I want to bring something to everybody's attention. I received a donation from Ryder McDowell, and speaking to my county council and my personal counsel is I have mailed back that contribution today. It is in the mail. Therefore, I am able to converse and have a dialogue with my board members. I think it's very important, this issue, therefore, the contribution in full has been sent back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Medina.
Mr. Chair, I would also like to make a comment before we start the general public hearing. Mr. Chair, this is not gonna be a popular statement I'm gonna make, but I feel like I have to make it. The unique times that we're in, I heard today that we're delaying the Olympics, the garlic festival has been canceled. You name it, everybody knows we're in a, a critical, unique situation, and however, I support this project. I do support the project. I think it's a great project. I think it's something we need for our county. I think that the, we, I, I, I would hope that I could get the consensus of the board to allow this public hearing to be delayed until our April 21st meeting, I believe it is, I'll have to check the date, and I'll tell you why I think that. We've had our technology rolling now for about a week. I believe we've had three meetings. I really appreciate staff. It sounds like we're getting this dialed in now. However, what I'm concerned about is we don't know what we don't know right now. We don't know who out there is having problems communicating with us. We don't know, essentially, we don't know what we don't know. It's, it sounds great right now because nobody's complaining, they can hear us, but what about the folks that can't and can't participate? Very concerned about that. It has nothing to do with the project. It has to do with the notification of the, I'm sorry, notification is the wrong word to use. It has to do with holding the public hearing under the circumstances, under the governor's exemption for the Public Meeting Act, the Brown Act specifically, and I would like us to have some more time with this technology to make sure that we have it exactly right, because I think we may actually end up hurting the project in the future if we have problems with the technology that we, we're not even aware of right now. And I felt like I needed to make those statements, however not popular. You guys know I'm a fan of the project, and I want to see the project, project succeed and flourish, and we need economic development now, more than ever, frankly, in our, in our community, and we're gonna need it more than ever in the next year to 18 months, maybe when this project actually starts bringing in some revenue. So I want to make my thoughts clear and then have a discussion with the board about the public hearing, if that's an appropriate time to do that. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Supervisor Patel?
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do disagree with continuing this public hearing. I have confidence in, in this process. We have been accessible through phone, and I'm sure some of us have received phone calls from both sides of the issue. We've received emails. This has been an, an ongoing discussion in the community. We all kind of know where we stand. This property has been subjected to delay after delay after delay. Government is a central service. It's not just about the crisis, it's about performing and having the responsibility of day-to-day operations as well. We are going into a recession. There's nobody that will dispute that. Anything that we can do to protect our local economy, action needs be done yesterday, and I think, you know, we all claim to be fans of economic development. Well, by delaying this one more time, I think we risk losing this project. I'm certain of it. This kind of, the urging of delay has come from one party, and that is pork. And their strategy is for us to delay. I, I believe the logic is for their initiative to be voted on in November. They feel they have a good, strong opportunity to be successful with that, and by delay today would give them the opportunity that this project will fall under that initiative and, and go away as well. This property also has a long history of commercial activity. It was never agriculture, and one of the resolutions that we have today is to bring it to an AR zone, back to what it was previous to Measure K or ordinance 991, and right now, the, the property has no designation, and that is clearly unfair to the, to the property owner, that he can't do a thing with his property. And, and that should be resolved. The other part of it is that we have a number of people on both sides that have taken the time to learn about Zoom. I think pork certainly has been able to educate and, and we'll have their speakers on there, just like the other side will as, as well. It's not a hard technology. It's been around for 10 years, and I, I think with the governor's order, it clearly allows us to move forward with, with the, this public hearing. So that's my stand. I, I think we ought to go forward and, and, and do what needs to be done today.
Thank you, Supervisor Patel. Supervisor Medina?
Well, this was a hard decision for me. Obvious, I felt it was extremely important to speak about this, or I would not have sent the check back to the McDowell Foundation. You know, first and foremost, I agree with this project. I think it's a great project, but it's all about timing. We, as a nation right now, we are extremely divided in politics, and this is not the way to combat this. We are a county of 60,000 people. Seven days ago, or eight days ago, including today, we started this new type of meeting. So I don't see how in seven days, people can actually become accustomed and understand that they can call in, they can use Zoom. All I'm asking for is to bring this back to a date certain, April 21st. In that timeframe, we're able to educate the people that elected me and all the other four people sitting here. It's important that in a time like this, we listen. And once again, when I look at what's happening right now, there's other things to worry about. I personally do not think a month delay is going to cause a major catastrophe for this project. So with that being said, I also think, if it's possible, we do look at the first part of this, this public hearing, that if it's possible to, and I want to make sure that there's no, no favoritism, nothing is, we're doing anything wrong, is prior to the three, the C3 zoning, that property was agriculture. On November of 2019, I believe we put it into C3. Is that correct, county council? Okay, October 24th, thank you. We put it into C3. It was my understanding that if the measure, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it was September.
Okay. September, October, November, one of those months, but it, it was prior to C3, it was agriculture. And in anyone's mind, if C3 never existed, I felt it would automatically revert back to agriculture. Once Measure K was, was defeated, then it would go back to agriculture, because I think that's the right thing. That's, I don't think anyone could really think any different, but that's what I'm personally thinking. So what I'm asking for is to continue with one of the items. We look at the other one on April 21st, date certain. It allows everyone to become, and I'm not saying experts, but they will understand that we have changed to a different format. You know, when you look out here, there isn't a lot of people, but if we get the word out and we let people know, they don't need high-speed internet. I mean, one of the emails that I was receiving kept on stating, we need high-speed internet. You do not need high-speed internet. You can, you can phone, you can call on a phone. So that is that one. Participation. I think it would actually increase participation, not decrease. Now, from your home, you can zoom in, you can talk. This has never been done before. So there's that part, that the, of the fallacy that I'm receiving in emails. So I think it increases, but I think timing eight days wasn't the right amount of time. So that's why I humbly ask for an extension on the second part till April 21st. Thank you.
And I think it should.
Actually, hold on, Barbara. Supervisor Hernandez? Is he mute?
Sorry, thank you, yeah, I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I've been really thinking about this, obviously a lot, and, and there's so much things to consider, and, and my heart is really heavy with, with everything that we're dealing with as a community, as a country, and there's obviously some, some automatic ramifications from the day that this shelter in place happened, you know, or what was set into motion in our county, and then across our state and then across, across the country. And, I mean, one question tonight I have to ask the board is, are we, are, are we trying to delay economic development? Are we trying to delay what it means to our community, the jobs, the business provides? I for one have, you know, I've been in business in, in San Diego County for the last five years, and I employ, you know, I, I've employed a lot of college-age and high school-age youth, and those folks are the ones that probably need the greatest amount of hope right now, and understand that there's hope for them in the future with, with a game plan that our community, that our country has to, to prepare them. And I know that when, you would think entry level doesn't have as much value, but a lot of small business owners would disagree. I think we set the stage for these, for these youths to become successful in the future, because there's certain, certain basic elements of what it means to serve the community. And some information that I've definitely, that I've just gotten recently highlights this, that the ones that are gonna be the most desperate in need are gonna be the ones the hardest hit. It's gonna be the younger folks, it's gonna be the, the lower econo, you know, basically folks that are struggling financially. It's gonna be the service workers, and, and that in and of itself is gonna create such a heaviness in our community if we don't address it, if we don't have a game plan for it. You know, I've heard that, that we're, we're starting into a recession. I wouldn't disagree with that. I mentioned lot at the last Board of Supervisors meeting that we needed to have a game plan for economic resilience, and I meant it. And, and I, I support the will of the voters. When it comes to that referendum, I, I, and I myself have been really, really engaged in the conversation, and as I've been engaged in the conversation with folks, I have a hard time swallowing the information that was put out there, because I believe in truthful information, and I believe in information that would cause the people to really digest the reality of, and the outcomes of a decision. And the information that was out there was very deceptive, it was a lot of confusing statements. I've had people come into my shop telling me, Peter, I just signed up for this referendum because I'm tired of house, and that to no end has frustrated, made it, made it very hard for me not to look people in eyes and say, are you sure you know what you signed up for? And, and because of those altered perceptions, I, I have a hard to believe, and that is the current sentiment of, of the voter, that we want to shut down business, because this is what I'm hearing. I mean, ultimately, this is the premise, like Supervisor Patel said, to, to a November shutdown, 90% of our county basically putting this landlocked into a special election process. That's dangerous to our county, especially in this day and age right now. So with all that said, I would encourage the board of supervisors to consider this, that any day that we lose, in the day that economically our county is gonna struggle more and more, just even that to put food on the table, or just for our community to be able to get the necessary services that it needs, we have to support economic development. And if we're not willing to basically, to, to put our neck out there and say, we're, we're gonna fight for economic development, then we've already lost. So I for one am not willing to, to, to take a step back from supporting this project. It's a good project, there's a lot of elements that have been vet, thoroughly vetted, and ultimately, there's obvious elements that are gonna be a huge support, even to the folks that would say this is, you know, the, the pork folks. Those folks themselves, I know that there's some of them that see this project as a good project, so it's not that simple to say, well, just because Measure K passed, that's the will of the voters to stop C1, because Measure K had nothing to do with C1. They said no to a C3 zoning notice, that's it. They didn't say no to C1 or, or development as a whole, because people themselves have told me, I just don't want houses, Peter, I'm tired of houses. Well, C1, this project itself has no houses. And, and for that, I wanted to move forward. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Just for clarification, Supervisor Hernandez, do you want both part, the first part and the second part to be discussed today?
You know that I had to wait for someone to unmute, but yes, I do, I want both elements of the project to go forward.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, before I straw the bore, I want to give my opinions on this. I think this is bad timing. I think that in light of the Corona 19 situation, I think we need to take a, a step back, take a, take a breather from this, from this item, and especially in light of the fact that Measure K was, was defeated. I, I just won't support it today, irregardless if we move it forward to the next meeting. I just want to tell you right now, for the record, I won't not support it. I think it's just bad timing today. I think Supervisor Gilio is correct. If, if you want this to pass, move it to the next meeting to allow more public input, but if you were to vote on it today, I will vote definitely no.
Not the next meeting, the 21st.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you, Supervisor Medina. April 23rd.
That gives a month, Miami.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
Chairman, I, I want to have a point of clarification on your comment. You know, if, if we don't move forward with, with this item, you know, there was a discussion me and you had in the CAO's office just briefly before the, the meeting, why are we discussing anything on the agenda? The public has a, a need to have access to anything that's on the consent agenda as well, as any future items that were, have in, in public regular session and so forth. Why are we even meeting then? If that's the, the concern that we have, that the public can't be here. We have more people on Zoom right now than we ever had for any issue, and I, I think the access is, is what's being stated is just a poor excuse.
Thank you for your opinions. Supervisor Medina?
You know, one thing just to talk about, why are we here? You know, had a conversation with a good friend that used the word, used the word essential. It's essential for us to speak with the Human Health Services. It's essential for us to pass some of these things that we're on consent agenda, but what we're, what I'm looking at here, it's not the project, it's not anything else, it's making sure that we educate our residents on how we will be conducting business for who knows how long, whether it's a month, whether it's two months, whether it's three months. That's all I'm after. So when you say, why are we here? We're here simply to have these, to have this dialogue. We're here to talk about things that are essential, and, you know, that's, I just want to make sure we're clear that it is our job too, to educate our residents on what's happening.
Okay, we're getting to a point. Go ahead, Peter, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you speak, and then I, I'll poll the board and see what directions they want to go. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things, one that I forgot to mention, and I apologize, we, I received a, a petition, and I know it's growing, of San Diego County residents that are for specifically this Vettabel project. They've talked about it, there's, there's a lot of dialogue about it, there's a lot of support about it, so it's not as simple to say that, that there's a lot of people that, that sent us emails to enter it into the record. I would, I would try to create at least a, a true conversation that actually said, there's also a lot of people that support it. We've gotten a lot of emails from people that oppose it. We've gotten a petition of folks, and I've seen that dialogue, and I've had, heard from folks that support this project. And then the second one is actually to piggyback off what Chairman, I mean, Supervisor Patel and Supervisor Medina, sorry, Mr. Chair, have mentioned, in that question of what is essential, my question to the board is, is it essential to generate revenue? And where are we at financially right now with the. And where are we at financially right now with the constant coronavirus to our county? Are we doing better financially or worse? Because by default, if we're not making a decision today, we're basically saying, we are okay with weakening our local economy, not having the revenues that we need to support the essential services to our community, the very thing that we beg for, you know, more respirators, more beds, you know, more opportunity and capacity within our hospital system. Where are we going to get that? Where's that money going to come from? If we're saying no to these projects, and to piggyback off what Supervisor Patel mentioned, do we think that we should just not have any conversations? Because if we're going to basically say, well, we're only talking about essential, are we saying that generating revenue is not essential? Either we're making decisions, and that's what we were elected to do, to make decisions, or we sit back and say, well, let's wait until this thing out and wait three months. So why are we even having meetings? We just fund essential services and not have meetings, and not make decisions, and then see what happens to the county then? I just don't see the logic in that. I feel like it's very political. I feel like to a certain extent, it's not doing anything besides putting us in a very comfortable middle ground instead of making a decision and making a hard decision right now in this time and day and age. We can't be sitting back. We got to make a decision. And if it means you don't get reelected again, at least you stand by your convictions and made a decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make another comment, please.
Actually, no, I'm not going to allow it because I need some guidance from County Council. We have it on the agenda. I'm going to straw the board right now and ask them if they wish to continue the discussion. If the board says continue to the April 21st meeting, that that ends discussion among the board. And the second part of the question is, the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak because it is on the agenda, and the public was understanding that it will be discussed today's meeting. So it's a two-part question.
Can we also look at one?
You can do, yes?
Yeah, that's all right.
Yes.
Right, we need to have public comment, and then the board can make a motion to hear part of it or both parts, or continue one part.
Okay, so I think I know where the board's going. So let me, and I'll get to you right now, Supervisor Gillio. Let me just see what the board feels on. Does the board feel to discuss this right now? Supervisor Patel?
Of course.
Supervisor Medina?
Just number one.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
He already said yes.
Is he a Supervisor Gillio?
I'm there on meeting, I'm sorry. Do you want to, go ahead?
Supervisor Hernandez, do you wish to discuss this item today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then Supervisor Gillio, and then I'll get to you, allow you to speak. Yes or no?
No.
No? Okay. Supervisor, it passes, three to two. I will vote no. Supervisor Gillio, you have the floor.
I just wanted to make a couple of clarifying comments to my fellow supervisors and the community. So absolutely, obviously, economic development's a huge priority. I've made that abundantly clear. I'm telling you now, I support the project. I was prepared to support it today. I'm prepared to support it on April 21st. What I'm saying simply is, we need to be very careful in these critical times to show our community that we are not trying to rush things through, not saying anybody's trying to do that, by the way. However, a month in a very long planning process is not going to kill this project. It's not going to end the project. And for us to do this now without knowing, we don't know what our problems are with Zoom right now. I can tell you, in the last three meetings that we've had, we've had problems. I was on Zoom, I couldn't hear anything you guys were saying. I just couldn't hear it. And I'm very hopeful that today, staff got that all ironed out, but we probably won't know until tomorrow, when people say, you know what, Jim, I couldn't hear when you were speaking. I couldn't hear what Mark said. I got disconnected. I was cut off. My cell phone's battery died. These are all the things that I want to have a little more time for our community to digest and be able to participate in this meeting very healthy. So when this is over on April 21st, if that's the will of the board, and the votes are there, this is over, and this project doesn't have to get litigated. It doesn't, we don't have to have another issue saying, hey, you guys skirted the, you know, essential part of the governor's order in his executive order, and you're doing business that could have waited. These are the concerns that I have, and I hope the community understands that. I had a very rough couple of days in thinking about this. This is a very hard decision for me to make and to think about and to say publicly, because I do support the project. I'm going to say it again, I'll say it to anybody who asks me. I just don't support us having this type of meeting right now during these times, and I hope that the community understands that, and we move forward to whatever the date is that the board chooses, and we adopt this project at the time when it's more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina, if you're going to speak, speak to the technicality of the meeting, because we're about to start.
Yeah, just for the record, on that vote that was three to two?
Yes.
My vote was to not hear number two.
Okay, thank you.
But to hear number one, because I believe number two's the main issue everyone is having. Number one is just reverting it back to where it was before C3 was even mentioned.
Because they're both wrapped together, we're going to discuss both of them, and then if the board, through their motion process, could just...
Yes, sir. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now with presentation?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Public. Mike here. Good morning, Board of Supervisors and members of the public. I'm Joel Ellenwood, Assistant County Counsel. I was going to address the board on a preliminary issue about the potential for continuing this hearing and the options that the board has. However, the board has already acted on that, although I would point out that if the hearing for the entire project is continued to April 21st, then public comment would be received at that time. It doesn't necessarily need to be heard today. So that's an option for the board to consider. Other than that, since the board, I'm sorry, I need to fully under, as I understand it, the board has voted three to two to continue the matter to April 21st. Is that correct?
I think we ought to have an official motion.
No, no, no. There was no motion on the floor. It was a poll of asking the board if they wished to discuss this item as presented today, and the answer was yes.
Okay, so...
And now, anything after that opens up for anything.
Okay, so for the first, the board has the authority. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify the poll vote from the board, because I thought that perhaps it's a three-two vote to just consider the first part of it.
That's what I thought.
So if the board would like to hear, can they continue the second part to a future meeting and then just hear the first part of it?
Again, the first item for the board to consider is, because there are requests to continue the public hearing on this, the board needs to make a motion and to decide whether or not it's going to continue the entire matter, or to hold a hearing on repealing ordinance 992 in the C3 zoning, and then continue the public hearing on C1 to April 21st.
And I should state that I also looked at the rules of procedure. After you second a motion, you can have debate on the subject, as you know.
Right, yes, that's correct. But to get to that point, we need to have the presentation, open it up to the public hearing, and then come back to the board, and then whatever the board direction wants to go, discuss one, approve one, or approve none, and then continue the meeting to April 21st. But before any of that stuff happens, we have to have the presentation and then public hearing.
It could shorten the public hearing, though, if some people knew that it was going to be continued to April 21st on the C.
Absolutely, that's true.
So we would recommend that the board make a decision on whether or not to proceed with the public hearing today on both items, or on just one item, and then continue the C1 to April 21st. That would clarify the matter both for the public and for the record.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Actually...
Let me make a motion.
Supervisor Gillio?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was going to recommend that we entertain a motion. However, prior to doing that, I wanted to get clarification from County Council, because this is a unique circumstance. Should we ask for public comment prior to making a motion to continue, or is it appropriate to make a motion prior to public comment?
I guess you could call for public comment. In abundance of caution, I'm not sure that it's required, but you could call for a public comment just on the motion to continue.
Call for public comment just on the motion. Got it. Okay, I got two other supervisors.
Okay.
You can make a motion.
I'm prepared to move that we continue both items till April 21st, and hear both items at that time. And then, Mr. Chair, I would request that we receive public comment on the motion.
Okay, is there a second? Is Supervisor Hernandez? He can hear?
I think it fails, it's fine.
I'll make a motion.
I can hear.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To hear an ordinance of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors to repeal ordinance number 992 and restore agriculture, rangeland zoning, floodplain combining district ARFP for Assessor Parcel NOS 013150, 017, 013150, 018, 013150, 023, 013150, 24, and 013150, 025. County file planning 190060, Beda Bell Road.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, that motion dies too. Supervisor Patel?
Well, my suggestion is that we hear the presentation, and we take in public comment, since we have a number of people that are online or on that Zoom. And then we take the two actions separately and go from there.
A second.
Okay, sounds like a good idea.
A second.
It's like, kind of...
Thank you. Oh, good. It was just...
Well, is that a motion?
I think, no, no, it wasn't a motion. It was just to take the presentation. And then at the end, we'll take the two zonings separately.
I concur, I concur. Thank you. Back to my original position, you may make your presentation.
Okay, that was a little five-minute sidebar, sorry.
Sometimes you should listen to me.
I did that once.
Good evening, morning, excuse me, I'm used to the Planning Commission at night.
I'm conditioned.
Tavin Kinison-Brown with the RMA Planning Division. Is this, I think I either hit buttons on Zoom, or I just wanted to use the...
Supervisor Hernandez, can you hear the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So thank you. These are some of the staff that have brought the presentation today, working on a base PowerPoint, and a lot of heavy lifting that's been done from consultants at EMC Planning Group previously. The actions before the board today are to consider an addendum to the Certified General Plan FEIR, adopt an ordinance to repeal number 99, ordinance 992, the C3 zoning, and reestablish the ARFP zoning for the four parcels. And following that, adopt an ordinance to establish the C1 combining district for the 29-acre previously zoned C3. So on November 20th, the San Diego County Planning Commission recommended three to two that the Board of Supervisors consider the addendum to the Certified General Plan FEIR and add the C1 commercial thoroughfare designation to the subject property. So a little background with some images to describe the project as we go forward here. So in July 2015, the general plan was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. That general plan included designated nodes on land use diagrams as commercial regional opportunity areas along the US Highway 101, including the subject address at Beda Bell Road, which will be illustrated on the next slide. On September 24th, 2019, the Board of Supervisors adopted the regional commercial district, implementing the general plan policies through ordinance 991 by adopting a new zoning section into Title 25, with policies that establish commercial regional nodes along Highway 101, and rezoned 29 acres at the subject property on Beda Bell Road to regional commercial So this is an exhibit pulled from the county's general plan that was, you know, set in ink five years ago, 2015. And on the west side of the diagram are Highway 101 coming through this area with four of the regional nodes indicated, this northern one being the Beda Bell Road, and the subject of our discussion today. Continuing the background, a citizens' referendum was filed, which suspended ordinance 991, the C3 zoning section. 992 was also a companion ordinance, but was not subject to the referendum, and that added the rezoned label C3 that stays in place on the, kind of a land use label on the map, but there's no corresponding zoning section currently in place to implement the commercial regional CR land use designation. Because the referendum basically took the rule set away for C3, but yet left the label of C3 on the map. On October 15th, an application was made by the applicant to have the county consider an alternative zoning designation for its property to implement general plan policies encouraging commercial development. And he suggested and offered up the C1 zoning designation for our consideration. On November 22nd, the Planning Commission considered that alternative to the C3 designation and recommended three to to the board that a C1 zoning designation be established at the Beda Bell property. Following along in history, on March 3rd, 2020, Measure K, which would have reestablished ordinance 991, failed, resulting in the disestablishment of the C3 zoning standards for the commercial regional nodes. Presently, here on March 24, the Planning Commission's November 22 recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that a C1 zoning designation be established of the property, that's what's being considered. So just briefly, some imagery from attachments to the resolutions that are included, but also, just for clarification, the Assessor Parcel numbers read by the supervisor earlier are reflected here. Parcels 013, 150, 17, 18, 24, and 25 are here along on the western shelf here along the 101. 114 acres are owned by the property owner, yet only 29 acres are subject to the C3 and the C1 zoning actions being requested of the board today. Just some images of the property. So from the larger land use areas here, the images are a little bit scale, a little different in scale, but here's 114 owned by the property owner. As we move forward in the slides, the actions that are being requested for the board to consider today would involve these areas more with the frontage along Beda Bell Road. So per the section of County Zoning Code, C1 District X has a combining district. So it doesn't replace underlying zoning, but it lays on top of it. That's part of the discussion today. Should the property, we take this, is the request to take the C3 off and put the AR floodplain back as it was, and even expected with the referendum, but yet not the literal translation of how that action worked? And then to request the overlay of the C1 on top of that, so all those rule sets would be in play. You could not act on the C1, but maybe do what the ARFP allows you to do in that district and C1. So that's what a combining district is.
Can I ask a question right there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for clarification. So Tavin, so today, as it sits, that property owner doesn't have any sort of zoning whatsoever, and can't submit an application, can't do anything with his land, even though he had activity from previous vested permits that he had, but he can't do anything right now. That property is in complete limbo, or as I've heard a term said, zombie land. It's dead, but it's not really.
You know, I think case law, um, some of this is subjective, but case law basically says that the, when you have inconsistencies or even an absence of implementation, that the general plan wins for that zoning designation.
You're right.
Um, that people could act upon what a broad policy document and the will of the general plan has on that property, but it is tricky when you've got a specific development proposed, it's convenient to have an implementation ordinance, whether it be C3, C2, C1, or, or something like that. But right now, there's the C3 label on the property and then no rule set in the zoning code because the referendum pulled the rule set on what you would do in a C3. So, that's what's happened and the applicant is asking for, may I put C, can I get the old zoning back, can I put C1 so I can do something with my property, can I have a rule set so that I may proceed?
I see.
Thank you Supervisor Medina.
So, just for clarity purposes, what you're saying is, I just want to follow up with Anthony's, is there's 85 acres that are currently ag, am I correct?
Is that the 29 less?
Yes, that's the 114.
I would say the whole 114 are, um, there.
Then, Mr. Chairman, did you say the whole, so 114 includes the 29, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's 85 that are ag and 29 that are C3, am I?
Yes.
Correct, okay, so, so what we're saying here then is if we take it back to where it was prior to the annexation or to the change of C3, it would just be 114 acres of ag land?
AR RF, yes, sir.
AR, okay. But right now, the other 29, as Anthony said, are in zombie land, that you said it goes back to the general plan, but the general plan states agriculture.
But I also believe it speaks to your little editorial comment earlier, or maybe it was the, the chairman who said, you know, with the referendum, we thought, you know, even the label C3 goes away, but it, but it hadn't.
So, by doing something similar to changing it back to ag, in theory, just in theory, we're not really disturbing too much because it's going back to what it was prior to anything else, so.
Yes, sir.
There shouldn't, there should, I'm just saying should, there should not be a lot of, uh, argumentative people because it's going back to where it was prior.
Correct.
Thank you.
None of that affects general plan?
Yes, you know, understood, I just wanted to make sure.
General plan policies are in place and untouched by these actions today. So, what is C1? C1 includes three levels of approval, site plan reviewable, review, administrative level permits, and use permits that track to the Planning Commission for their review. However, the general plan policy that's still in effect, LW 5.3, all developments are required to undergo design review at the Planning Commission. So, one of those things that maybe the public or, um, some administrators thought were lost with C3, it's like if C3 goes away, it's not going to have review at the Planning Commission, the general plan is still in play and requires Planning Commission review. So, that also means public involvement, public engagement and.
Sequa involved also?
And sequa at that time, yes, sir.
Can you say that again?
When, if, if a project is proposed in the C1 District, it's a use permit that tracks to the Planning Commission, subject to all land use and environmental regulations and control and public participation policies of state law as well as our local practice.
And sequa.
And sequa, and the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you.
For project level review. Yes. So, just as a contrast, with C1, basically back to relevant general plan policies, um, it's consistent with the nodes as shown, it's strategically located along Highway 101 near an interchange, does have access, um, requires cohesive vision to protect cities, counties scenic resources, um, general plan policies discourages strip development, even with the C1 applied here, and commission design review and the general plan encourages visitor-oriented development, hotels, motels, restaurants, et cetera, that's in the general plan and can be asked for through use permit in C1. So, just to reiterate that this is not necessarily a new staff presentation, but this is a presentation of the Planning Commission's recommendation to you that they took, that they took in November and I've selected a few notable recitals and then we'll be done with my presentation. The Planning Commission found that the, that the C1 District implements the purposes of the general plan, regional land uses, regardless of the outcome of the referendum and petition, that the C1 would be as effective. In the Planning Commission's resolution, the second bullet, they recommended the, the C1 overlay to the existing regional commercial C3 zoning and I've parenthesized here modified for BOs action because that now, um, post Planning Commission, the recommendation from council and from staff here is that two-step approach that you've talked about, instead of just adding C1, there's the two-step, do we revert to the ARFP and then as a second action, consider C1. So, that's how I've, that's why I've parenthesized that medium, that middle paragraph because the Planning Commission had not considered going back to AR and RF, but it's within your discretion here to do that. Just some business, keeping the property owner executed reimbursement agreement with the county to fund, turning the gears here of development review. And the Planning Commission found the C1 zoning to be consistent with general plan, that it would serve the public necessity, convenience, and welfare and be good zoning practice and they adopted a resolution, sorry, I don't have the number right there, but it is in your packet for recommending that the board approve the zoning map amendments. And just to reiterate right here, the project does not currently propose any construction on the subject properties, this is not a development review of structures, access, and the size of the affair, it's just the colors and the labels on the map. And the Planning Commission has reviewed and determined that qualifies, um, that the, uh, the sequel work that under, was undertaken for the general plan policies in, adopted 2015, that it's, uh, that review is appropriate, um, at this time for the labeling and the rezoning efforts. That document's called an addendum. So, recommended actions to be taken by the Board of Supervisors and you can take this, of course, at your pace and in pieces if you wish, but we, staff recommends that you receive public testimony from the public and the applicant, that you can direct questions to us and the applicant, should they be online, then close the public hearing and deliberate the evidence presented and, um, it would be your discretion to entertain motions from members of the board to adopt resolutions that make findings with regard to the project sequel compliance and consistency with general plan and the ordinance as directed. So, I do have other stuff here that could follow, but that is the, the nuts and bolts of the presentation today and I'm welcome to take questions, county council is here or maybe you'd like to go directly to the folks on Zoom, however they be presented.
Thank you for the presentation, county council. Do we need to read this title first before we go into public comments?
I want to make a comment before.
Before they read it?
Yeah, I have questions for Tavin.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Tavin, residential, any type of homes can they be built on C1?
No.
And if we decided to move forward, we can actually put that in there saying there's no homes whatsoever built on this 29, or I'm sorry, this 29 acres?
Not really at this time, it's either the, you feel that the C1 zoning district as it's written right now with its rules is appropriate or not, we're not creating a, a new, new rule set of C1 plus or C1 minus.
Okay, so let's, let's digress, so you're saying C1, no housing?
That's correct.
Okay. At this point in time, can, on C1s, can we talk about no water parks, no alligator parks and things of that nonsense?
No.
So, that would be when?
That would be at the time a development, that would be at the time a development application is made.
Okay.
And at any scale, it would require a conditional use permit and so conditions as to what can or could not be included would be appropriate to be considered at that time.
And the research I've done on this certain 29 acres, there is no cost to the county when it comes to the infrastructure, that is all covered by a developer?
I believe that Director Maveragenis has addressed this issue in, in a dialogue with you and that's correct.
Okay.
There is, there are no infrastructure costs to the county that would be borne by the developer in accordance with whatever development application they may choose to make in the future.
And then during the permitting process, there will be monies going to fire and sheriff during, during the impact fees?
It's correct, that impact fees would be, uh, would be assessed on this property as with any other development in the county.
Now, the other thing I've asked our RMA director to look at is possibly looking at, because what happens is the ongoing expense of fire and of the sheriff's state, the sheriff's office, is there a possibility we can look at a CFD?
Again, uh, community facilities districts are a common condition of approval for all types of development in the county, so it could be included with this. Another possibility is with a development application, there may be an application for a development agreement in which those issues could also be addressed.
So, basically what we're, what we're saying after this conversation is the county is really out nothing if this all came to fruition.
At this time, the only action before the board is to adopt zoning that applies to the property, there is no application for a development, there are no fiscal impacts related to zoning in and of itself.
Understood, but what I'm looking at is leaping one step forward, knowing that if and when we do approve a C1, that we have and all the residents out there understand, we have the capability to set these things forward, therefore causing a minimal cost to our general fund.
Yeah, the, the practice over many years is for jurisdictions to seek what they call revenue neutrality, that to allow a private development would not bear a public cost and that the private developer is obligated to construct those roads, those pipes, those access points that serve their project, not at the public expense, so that's general practice, it flashes through conditional use permit review as well as sequa review, which sequa has a direct section on public safety and health and, you know, proportionality of impact to fire districts and, and sheriff's districts and the county goes there through the collection of impact fees.
Thank you, that answers all the questions from a lot of the emails we received.
What question, Mr. Chair?
Sure, hold on Jim, hold on Supervisor, Supervisor Patel?
Oh, thank you, yeah, I think that demonstrates, I appreciated Supervisor Medina's, uh, series of questions and, and this is just a beginning of a, of a very long process for any property owner and any type of zoning to go through and that's why we're, I'm so interested in establishing some sort of zoning on a piece of property that, that's there, but, you know, we're talking about reverting it back to AR and that's agricultural.
Agricultural rangeland floodplain.
What's that?
Agricultural rangeland and floodplain.
Right, and the design of the 29 acres is the, the portions of the properties that is outside of that floodplain way, I, I understand it. And we're talking about, I want to go one step further from Supervisor Medina's questions, there's one, two, three, four, five parcels that we're talking about.
There are four.
Four parcels? Okay, four parcels and, um, you know, I'm, I'm of the mindset of Supervisor Hernandez, I, I don't want to see, uh, you know, residential housing development, you know, outside of the, you know, the, the two cities, um, but these folks, if we change it just to AR, uh, they're, they're entitled to putting housing structures if they, you know, so choose, is that correct?
The minimum building, uh, uh, the minimum building site in an AR district is 40 acres.
Right.
But I think the supervisor is also drawing attention to that farm worker housing is an allowed use in agricultural zones.
Right.
Correct?
So, that's a be kind of an option for the applicant, uh, just to get the AR zoning is, to turn it into some sort of housing project.
But we can definitively say this is not a zone that allows subdivisions, single family standalone properties and suburban, suburban look.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right, yeah, and we certainly would discourage that, but there, there are some options that is available, like next door, there's a RV park and maybe a person could continue the RV park concept and, or, uh, work, uh, labor housing.
Which, not the labor housing, but an RV park expansion or change like that would also be a use permit subject to Planning Commission evaluation and review and public scrutiny.
Right, that's good, anyway, I'll have some more comments after public comment, thanks.
One more question prior.
Hold on Supervisor Medina, Supervisor Gillio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, make sure my mic's on here, this is Jim Gillio for the people on the phone so we can hear me fine, the questions I have are questions that I know the answer to, but I would really appreciate to hear from our staff experts and to get out into the community. One of the attacks the no on Measure K people have levied out there is that we are essentially ignoring the will of the people and implementing a zoning decision and overturning the election essentially and, and I'd like you to address that, not in a political manner, however, I'd like you to address it as, as such, so Measure K attacked zoning ordinance number 996, correct?
Uh, 991.
991, my apologies, I misspoke there, I'm gonna write that down, so, because I'm gonna say it about another hundred times right now, 991, it did not, did not have anything to do with any specific project, it did not have anything to do with the future zoning there, it specifically removed, uh, C3 zoning from the four specific nodes, is that correct?
Actually, it does not remove the, the zoning, what it does is remove the rules that apply to that zoning district.
Got it.
So, the ordinances 992 through 994 amended the zoning map to designate certain areas at each of those, uh, nodes for C3 zoning. That C3 zoning was not subject to the referendum and remains in effect.
Okay, the rules.
But with no rules.
Right, which is confusing for folks, so I wanted to make that clear, so there's, there's, the C3 zoning's in effect, however, there's no rules to implement the C3 zoning, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay, so that, that confuses some folks, so, um, and again, I'm willing to withstand the scrutiny on that and to move forward, again, I want to make the point, today, my concern is this specific public hearing and the public's ability to participate and the essentialness of the governor's order to allow us to interact in a way that we've never done in the past and one, one last point, sequa, I'm gonna say it again, it's already been said maybe three or four times here, uh, any project that moves forward in this, and again, this specific location, we're talking about the Bedebell Road, we heard a lot of APN parcels mentioned and again, there's people on the phone that can't see the screen, um, one of my, one of my points, so what you're seeing on the screen now is you're seeing a parcel map and if you're all concerned about, you heard about, how many parcels did we read into the record, four?
There are four parcels involved in this.
One of the other confusing points I got over the phone from both pro and anti folks over the weekend, why are you taking all four of these nodes, you have four parcel numbers? You have four parcel numbers. Nope. That's not the case. Hold on, let me finish, please.
Yeah.
That, that's not the case. We're not dealing with four nodes. We're dealing with four parcels on the Beddable area, the Beddable, let's call it a Beddable Plan area, I'm, I'm gonna make up that term, in, in, in that area. It has nothing to do with the other four parcels. I just want everybody on the phone to be clear with that, because if you're like me and you're on the phone and you're not on the Zoom app, you can't see what's on the screen right now. We're talking about four parcels, Beddable Road only. If you want to call it a node, one node, not four nodes. And I wanted to make that point to the public, so they're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gillio. Supervisor Medina?
I withdraw my, no, no, I don't, I'm sorry. The question I have now is, you know, the form, the way we're working this out was to take it back from C3 to agriculture, then from there to C1. Is there a reason why we have to go back to agriculture? Or do you, can we just go straight to C1?
The problem with, with that is C1 is a combining district. There has to be underlying zoning that applies to a C1 district. So, right now, the only underlying zoning is C3. If, if you re, if you restore the ARFP zoning, then there is, all of the uses allowed under the ARFP zoning, regardless of whether or not an application is made for commercial development. So whatever is allowed for agriculture could proceed on the entire area, and the, only if the C1 overlay or combining district is approved, could commercial development proceed.
Understood. Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank you, Joel, for that clarification. That really, really helped. I, I had that sense, looking at the documents. It's very clear to me that, that the new project is actually, to a certain extent, even going all over again into giving, like, giving, giving the, like, sending up another concession. Because, I mean, if you're gonna go AR in that, the rest of that acreage, and what's the acreage difference, Joel, between the AR and C1 combining?
Um, there's 114 total, 29 acres that could be, so that the balance is 85, thanks to Supervisor Medina's math skills.
So it'd be 29, it would be C1, and then the rest would go over the river back to AR?
No, it's still AR. 29, 85 acres is still zoned ARFP.
Okay. I'm taking that as a yes. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Not anymore. We can hear you, Supervisor.
Hello?
He's broken up.
Oh.
Yes, we, we can hear you.
Supervisor Hernandez, can you hear us?
That's the tech.
He's done? Okay. He concluded his, okay. Thank you.
He's not done.
Yes, Peter. Can you hear us? Watson? Watson, can you hear us?
I think he's done.
He is not.
He's done. Okay. You, you want to introduce it by title, so we can go to public comment now?
Okay. I believe that Supervisor Medina already read the title of the ordinance that would have brought it back to AR, correct? You read that whole title?
Yeah.
So the second title of the other ordinance is...
Yes, can you hear us, Peter? You wanna, you wanna give him a call or mute him or something? Go ahead.
So the second title is an ordinance of the San Benito County Board of Supervisors to Approve the Zone Change Petition County File PLN 190060, Beddable Road and Rezone the Portions of the Parcels Described Here and to Include the Commercial Thoroughfare C1 Combining Zone District. So now you have both titles read into the record.
Perfect. Now we have on the record, now we'll open it up to the public. Okay, who's first?
General practice is often to hear from the applicant.
Can we take a, can we take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess. Sounds good.
Nobody could hear us right now.
Do we have the applicant here?
All right. Okay, we are in public comment session. Okay, who's our first guest speaker? And for the, in three minutes, state your name.
Yes, good morning, this is Jackie Morris Lopez, I'm the resident of San Juan Batista, California, 46 Mission Street, and I just want to address the supervisor's good morning terms. I feel that the initial discussion at the meeting that was presented by Chair Dela Cruz is right on spot, spot on. I think at this time, this should not be the type of essential, this is not essential business, number one. I feel that there is an executive order granted by our governor that addresses the fact, and I know that there isn't a project, that's what they keep telling us, no project, but yet there is a project idea submitted, which makes us folks quite nervous, that this is kind of like a doublespeak. And as far as I understand the mandate, executive mandate, there is not to be any construction or pulling of any permits that are not essential. And then by understanding of essential construction and permitting would be in response to the coronavirus, i.e. clinics, i.e. portable tech sites, i.e. expansion of hospitals or clinics. This does not fall into that category. And also for the fact that people are very distracted, concerned, worried, trying to shelter in place. And I know that you attempted, I'm very tech savvy, I've got my laptop on, I'm talking on my landline, I have my cell phone as a backup, and all I can see visually in the corner of my laptop is Supervisor Hernandez's face. I don't know why you haven't panned the panel. There was an interruption with Hernandez's voice, he kept saying hello, hello, the reception is very garbled. So for anyone that has any hearing issues or bad reception, this is not the way to run a public hearing, and you all know that. So I implore you, just as your chair had brought up, and also Supervisor Mark Medina, thank you, sir, this should take place at another time, this is not the time to make any decisions on that. And I won't speak to the merits of it, because that's a whole other ball of wax. But please, please put this off for another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, guess?
Next, next speaker, you will hear unmuted. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Medina?
Sorry.
Is it Linus? Is it Elliot?
Yes.
Can you speak, get closer to your mic, please?
Hold on. Okay, so can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir? Are you there?
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I kept pushing the, the pound nine because I, we had lost audio, and all I could do is hear Peter, so I'm sorry. But I'll go ahead and I'll speak now. And so, I just listened to Jackie speak, and she's concerned about, you know, that this project is gonna start building. This, this project is months and months away from any permits being requested to even start building. They've gotta go through the, they've gotta go through the architectural, they've gotta go, all kinds of things to go forward. So that's, that's not an issue here. And I completely agree with Peter Hernandez, that we need to, we need to, I'm sorry, Supervisor Hernandez, no disrespect, we need to continue with life. We need to, we understand the situation that we are, are all in, but we have to continue with it. This is essential for economic development. This, this virus that, that hit upon us is a full economic disaster to the whole country. This project is months away from even hiring the first person. And if we continue with this project, it'll hopefully be when we're starting to get out of this and get back into, out of the recession, because that's exactly what we're about to, we're already in. So, one of the things with regards to is that Supervisor Gillio pointed out, this is regarding one parcel. This is, this is just one parcel. This is not a whole four nodes, 16 nodes, whatever the pork people were putting out there. And it's really just concerning to me that the pork people, you know, I don't know what else to call that group, is that they are putting out misinformation to the public, and they've done this from the very beginning, and it continues now. So we need to step back a little bit and, and educate the community, which is, which is what's been going on, there's a group now that, that's going out there and educating the committee, community, because we are preparing for a measure to be, come into November, that's actually wanting to stop all economic development for the next 29 years. This is, this is ridiculous. I don't, right now, we're just talking about this one project, I think we should go forward with it. We have the idea that there's, you know, no, there's not a housing development, and that's what pork did. Pork went out, and they scared people, and they had the people sign petitions, that this was about housing, they had pictures about traffic up in San Jose, that this was gonna cause traffic like in San Jose, which is far from what, what was gonna happen in this project. It, it was more misinformation being put out there, and that's why the measure lost. I completely agree with Supervisor Hernandez and with Supervisor Patellos, we should be able to go forward with this project. We know what it means, we know what it...
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next speaker.
So next speaker, James, you will be unmuted. Please state your name for the record.
James Stark Wolf.
James what?
Can you, can you repeat that again?
James Stark Wolf.
Stark Wolf. Okay, thank you. Your three minutes will be good.
The statement by Supervisor Hernandez is, I think, demagoguery to say that the other side is misrepresenting without citing any kind of information. So that I dismiss. The people have spoken. I want to speak as I have most of the supervisors' meetings for a number of months about the sacred places. And the chair of the Amamutson has said in a letter to the board that this is essentially the same situation as in Santa Clara County. Santa Clara County has stepped back from this, regardless of the timing, this is a violation of sacred lands, and it's not just a matter of concern for the Amamutson, but for the Romson, other Alonees peoples, Aslan, Lennon, and indigenous people from all over. And I can't really see anything or hear anything on this, and I think it's improper. The C3 zoning is the same nature as C1, and I'd like to ask that all the arguments that have been made in the discussion of these places, and especially Beddable, be admitted into evidence. Thank you.
Okay, so the next person that will be unmuted will be Andy. Please state your name for the record, and following that, your three minutes will be good, thanks, Andy.
Can you hear me, it's actually Mary because my computer's not working, so we're both here.
Thank you, Mary.
Just wanted to do, what we are concerned about, the Governor's Executive Order regarding the San Brown Act still does require also one public one accessible location from which members of the House have the right to observe and offer public comment at the meeting. And I know that our group has, the Preserve Our Rural Communities, has quite a few retirees and have already told me that it's very problematic, you know, they don't have, some of them don't have a computer, and I know they can call in, but I think alias Leonard has, you know, already proven to us, it's very confusing, it seems hard, and even though I have Zoom here, I have slower internet, it's very hard to discern who is speaking, and when the supervisors speak and some of the other staff members, I think, the wording is very garbled, so I think that the format we have is really problematic, and I just want to point out that, that it could be violating the Brown Act because you don't have a physical site, I know that Natasha was called yesterday, one of our members, to ask if she could attend in person, and was told she couldn't. So anyway, that was my one comment about access, the other comment I wanted to make is that, the earlier comment that this is neutral and trips of impact on fire and share, and that the action fees in future cover this, that it will, you know, this development, and I had researched this a bit, and the Cal Fire says that the area is a high fire risk, and given the way fires are in our, in California, I don't think it's sort of a neutral thing, I think that it could be extremely expensive to have a site there that, you know, has a fire issue, and it would be very costly for the general public, we witnessed this in California, that when you build a place that are high fire risk, it can be very expensive for the public. And finally, I just want to say that I support the, the delaying of the meeting and until a time when people can physically attend the meeting.
Where when the technology works.
Anyway, so that's my comment, and let me see, my husband has wanted to make a public comment.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, put on mute, put, put on mute, I'm sorry, I apologize, only one per person, you're welcome to be in line, and then we'll allow you to speak, but for the time being, we only allow one per person under the time constraint of three minutes, thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Hello, can, my name is Dora Shuey, and I'm, I would like to add, excuse me?
Can you hold on a minute, please?
Can you, can you, can you state your first and last name and county of residence, please?
Okay, Dora Shuey, and that's S-H-U-E-Y, my county of residence is Santa Cruz County, but I am here to speak on behalf of my stepdaughter and her children who were unable to attend the conference for reasons that were stated earlier, I have two grandchildren who are both attending Hollister High, so they're proud Haybailers, and over the years of their lives, when I often pick them up from school, spend time with them, and I have seen how much the traffic has increased, I have seen the consequences of unplanned development, and I would very much like to see the planning, that's what the whole point of the overturning of Measure K was, because San Benito is a small, beautiful county with a lot of heritage, and the, and that needs to be preserved and protected, once things are done to it, that can never be, it can never be healed. And in regards to that, I would also, as Mr. Stark Wolf, and I'm sure others will, speak to these sacred Indian sites which are there, our family is lucky to live close to Indian Canyon, and we are very, very thankful to everything the Alonee people are doing and the other indigenous peoples who come to that beautiful property, and we would also like to see horrid stocks preserved and protected so that the Amamutson can once again have a lot of control over that area, there are many, many sacred sites there that were used for ceremonies, for, for time immemorial, there are also many cultural archaeological sites, both from native sites and then from the colonials such as our ancestors, and that's an area, it's a beautiful area, also environmentally, it's, it's a habitat, incredible habitat, it, it provides water for our river, there are just so many things about it, and I would really like to echo Herman Val Lopez's comments, I saw his letter, where he's talking about the need to protect horrid stocks, so there really need, and not just, I mean, it's not only horrid stock, as important as horrid stock is, we are talking about the whole nature of this entire county and the heritage for the generations to come. And then once again, I would like to reiterate the objections to the meeting being held now, and it probably is a violation of the Brown Act, so I would hope that this meeting, you would take our comments into account, even the person who's spoken in favor of this project admitted that it's months and months down the road, so we can hardly call it essential. So thank you very much for your time, and just to end, I would like you to really, really remember that this land is not ours, and that we should really listen to the voices of the people before us.
Thank you, madam. Next.
And next, next is Bob, and if you can just state your name for the record and county of residence.
Hi, this is Bob Fittney. Let me just say that I just have a little bit of a delay, but it's fine.
Can you get closer to your phone, please?
Please?
Can you get closer to the phone, please?
Or the mic?
Do a recap, please.
That's a little bit better, just, would you just speak up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Again, Bob Fittney, President of San Antonio State Department of Health, long time resident in this county, and I would say now just to tell him that the delay, but it's fine, all right, I'll, I'll hold on, I might hold on, so let me just make a quick change. First off, to say that consideration of this thing is not essential, I think it is ridiculous, given the coronavirus, trying openly to cover some significant economic impact that's been had on all of us, in dealing with that, you'd be among the most essential assets that supervisors would be to be taking. And, and then second point I would note is that, I'm about as technologically challenged as anyone I know, as I've always said when I was a student, I just, but inside of that, I'm finding that I think, there is, I'm fine, and all the supervisors, all the supervisors, there was a period, they cut out of the audio, but it was very good, and it was resolved, and then I find that this method is really not a problem, it shouldn't be a problem, I think that when this is fully considered an effort, there's more reason not to sit on that, because of the state, because of the county, central board, given very difficult circumstances. And that's about all of this stuff, there's no comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, please state your name for the record and county of residence, first and last name, thank you.
This is me. Hi, my name is Andy Shaw Coron, I'm the President of Preserve Our Rural Communities, and of course, like everybody else, we're deeply concerned about the, you know, the kinds of disruptions that are happening in people's lives, and are appreciative of the fact that several of the supervisors have recognized that and want to push this off to April twenty-second, I think it was, where more people can participate, but I should raise a couple of issues regarding what's going on in terms of the hearing today. The Governor's Executive Order that allows for the suspension of the Brown Act and allows for the pulling of meetings by teleconference requires that there be designated at least one publicly accessible location from which members of the public shall have the right to observe and offer public comment, and the count, you know, and this, having a Zoom teleconference is not adequate, but also, I, I should point out with all the talk about going to C-one, that there really, and all, all the talk about the economic benefits of this project, from the very beginning, we raised the issue that there needed to be economic studies as well as traffic studies, water studies, wildlife studies, and all the things that are typical of changing the nature of a major area fundamentally, and all of that should happen upfront, and we feel like the whole process has kind of put the cart before the horse, and that's part of why we are pushing the idea of having an initiative process so that the people can vote on these kinds of issues, because if the people actually do vote, I think there would be much more effort by public officials and by developers to actually lay out and plan and show the impacts to the public about all of this stuff, so that people could make an informed decision, because fundamentally, what we need is greater democracy, especially in times of great insecurity, people need to feel like their voice is being heard, and I think that puts even a greater premium on transparency and democracy, and again, I just want to thank you, I have two letters, and I'm not going to reiterate them all, one about the impact on the Pajaro River of doing this project in the flood plain and on the various threatened and species that reside there, but that's all in my letter, and I can't go over all of that in three minutes, but again, I want to thank those who are sensitive enough to say that this should go forward, because I have to say, in this particular meeting today, this thing kept on going to where we couldn't hear anything, we didn't know what was going on, and I imagine a lot of people during these periods of silence where people were saying, is anybody there? Is anybody there? There probably a lot of people hung up in frustration, but thank you so much.
Thank, thank you. Next one, do say.
Uh, next one, so please state your name, first and last name for the record and county of residence, thank you.
Edomo One Silent, and I'm in Edo County, District One.
Thank you, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair and Board Supervisors, I come before you here as a private citizen and a retired Public Health Administrator, government's failure to contend, contain the COVID-19 means that it may deter its fate, so we need to look at this from that angle, the COVID-19 pandemic is poised to put a massive strain on our county's tax coffers, one that we may not be able to rebound from for many years, the unimpossible has become the new normal here in San Diego County, just how much of an impact COVID-19 will have on the global U.S. and California economy is astronomically ominous and looming question now facing government leaders such as yourself, the uncertainty surrounding the spread, containment, and recovery rates of the disease, and the extremely fast-moving nature of daily events makes estimating the direct economic impact of the pandemic close to impossible, according to new forecasts released today by the Pichuan Economics, public services will suffer here in San Diego County, those most vulnerable in our communities will face a brunt, if it extends for months and months and it knocks twenty to thirty percent of our sales members, you have to go back to the tough measures that the county had to do in the last recession, the layoffs, the furloughs, and the cuts, public services will suffer, and those most vulnerable in our community will face a brunt, we owe it to them to make decisions now for a brighter economic future with San Benito County, I urge you to support the zoning change before you, the federal project will bring new jobs and resources that our county needs, and by the way, nobody lost contact during the, as the gentleman has said, there were forty-three participants, we didn't lose any, and you could see it in the chat window, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So next speaker, please state your first and last name and county of residence.
Hi, Lou Shermanke, County of Residence, is Santa Clara, and I'm speaking as an individual who has worked in cultural resource management or contract archaeology in both Santa Clara and San Benito Counties in the past, as a person whose family has resided in both counties for well over a century, aside from disregarding the spirit of the non-K vote and concerns regarding the impact to the natural environment, there's an issue of fundamental human rights at stake concerning this rezoning, this human rights issue has to do with the fact that the federal lies within the well-established boundaries of Puristak, the most sacred ceremonial site of the Amamutson travel ban, the danger to cultural resources afforded by any sort of excavation and construction is real, regardless of what that zoning entails, Highway 101, though a quote-unquote historic route, has already destroyed countless graves, sacred sites, and cultural sites, delaying this vote to a time when tribal members who are currently sequestered, many of whom have to live outside of the area for economic reasons and can't travel on short notice, are available, the comment is the proper thing to do, because the proper thing to do is to delay this, this vote, an outbreak of disease is what drove Muckton ancestors from this site in the eighteen thirties, they were never given western legal right to the land that it inhabited for over ten thousand years, please don't let another bound disease lead to the possible further destruction of their ancestors' remains in the most sacred ceremonial site, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, please state your first and last name for the record and county of residence, thank you.
Yeah, this is Zachary Walton, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on just a few things, and I think we all recognize that participation in the, in the process is not a deep, but this is our new reality, and the fact is that there are other counties up and down the state that are holding hearings telephonically as well, and somebody mentioned it, but participation has been meaningful, you've got, you know, over forty folks in the Zoom, and so I think the, the records suggest that actually you've got meaningful participation going on there. One of the things I'd like to just point out is that the C-one zoning is not, is not the, the same as C-three, Fork is mentioning that you got to recognize the vote of the people and so on, again, C-one is a different type of zoning, but let's also remember that the vote on C-three was, I'll say it's B.C., it's for the coronavirus, this is a new day and age, and the economic impacts that are gonna, that we're all gonna suffer are gonna be quite severe, and I think that there's a legitimate question as to whether different public agencies are going to be able, well, I think there's a question of how well will Lily County be able to preserve and protect if it can't necessarily generate the revenue it requires for critical infrastructure. Question was raised about, hey, you can just push this back a month, the issue of delay, people should recognize this for what it is, this is a strategy, it's a strategy to, to just push back the permitting process because of the initiative that Fork is trying to put forth, that would put all commercial development on ice, so it's really important to recognize that a one-month delay is not a one-month delay, it's actually closing the doors on, on, on meaningful, it's closing the doors on, on development. The other thing I, I just point The other thing I just point out is, when you listen to the comments opposed to the project, are they really so substantially different from what you've heard before? Do we really need another month for Fork to make the same point that it's made before? I think everybody understands where they line up on the Vettabel property. You know, if the board agrees that economic development is essential, then the time to act is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next participant, please state your first and last name and county of residence.
Thomas.
Oh, yeah. Am I on now?
You are on. Go ahead and state your first and last name and county of residence.
My name is Thomas Carr, and I'm a Monterey County resident. And I want to say that due to the coronavirus emergency, the supervisors should focus on the health and safety of the community and are responsible to splendor valuable time and resources on non-essential items of resigning our lands to commercial. This is emphasized by the fact that the public is forbidden to physically attend to public hearing on the resigning of item under an executive order. Therefore, I respectfully request the supervisors to not take action on item nine at this meeting. The public hearing and board vote should be postponed until the time that the executive order is collected and the public is allowed to attend in person. If the supervisors still choose to address the zoning, I point out that recently nearly 60% of the San Bernardino County votes were against Measure K. The result was to rescind the C3 zoning ordinance, 991, because the voters did not want commercial development along the Highway 101 corridor in the county. The C1 zoning, they're convinced the decision made by the voters by allowing commercial development at the Vettabel mode. I ask the supervisors to expect the approval of the voter by voting against the C1 zoning. Approving the C1 resigning ordinance over the Vettabel mode may be a violation of California Elections Code. It's illegal under the municipal elections code 941 to reenact material, the same ordinance for a period of one year following a disapproval of the zoning by the voters. I'm confident that the court will also find substantially similar to a Vettabel note to the adoption of County Elections Code 9145. Finally, the EIR being cited for the C1 zoning is derived from the 135 general plan. Contrary to the claims of the SEQA findings of fact documents, the EIR is more than five years old, and traffic conditions have changed significantly since that time. The EIR was also based on the way no boundaries in the general plan at the time. The EIR needs to be redone in order to be updated and compliant with SEQA before approving the zoning of specific particles. Given the overwhelming sentiment against commercial development along Highway 101, supervisors should amend the general plan to remove the Vettabel original commercial mode.
Thank you.
Okay. So next participant, please state your first and last name and county of residence.
Hi, this is Mia Casey. I'm from San Bernardino County.
Thanks, go ahead and be it.
Okay, good morning, Supervisors, or good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here in full support of the Vettabel project, and I want to express my utter disappointment in the fact that you're considering delaying this project any further. As a former sustainability coordinator for a college campus, I kind of look at everything through an environmental lens, and I have found that it's amazing what has already been done for the property in question. It was a huge eyesore and has been fully cleaned up, as well as the restoring of the Pajaro River watershed. I think that the applicants have shown themselves to be good stewards of the land. Not only did they work hard at ecological restoration, but have also dedicated 86 acres for growing organic produce, which aligns perfectly with our rich farming heritage. And the walking trails and picnic areas along the Pajaro River will allow residents and visitors alike to enjoy our beautiful countryside. Because of this care and dedication and thoughtful planning, I know Vettabel is a good project for our county. And adding a rest area, gas station, and diner is going to provide needed services to folks that drive on 101 along an eight-mile stretch where none is currently provided. If you've ever been stuck in that traffic there and need a service, you know how valuable this can be. So our county will benefit not only from services provided, but will reap the revenue benefits as well. And there's the added cherry on top, that all profits from this project are going to be donated to children's cancer research. With the uncertain economic times ahead of us, this is exactly the kind of project that should be considered. So I urge you, don't delay any longer. Support and approve the zoning of this project. I have one last thing to say to the President of Fork, who believes he speaks for San Bernardino County. You do not speak for me or the over 300 people whose signatures were gathered in just four days in support of the Vettabel project and that were submitted to the county. Measure K was defeated through a campaign of defeat and misinformation. Putting you on notice now that we're on to your schemes and hidden agendas, we want no part of them. We want a brighter economic future for San Bernardino County, and we will continue to fight for that future and oppose any efforts by you to strangle business development and grow here for your own personal gain. Thank you.
Thank you.
So no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Can we all, for the record, we do have some letters, emails that we got, right? Okay, we just want to make sure they're entered for the record.
This is from Barbara Snyder. We received 35 emails prior to today's meeting, one requested to be read, from Barbara Snyder of San Bernardino County. The March 24th public hearing regarding the C1 rezon of Vettabel should be postponed until a time after the coronavirus emergency, when the public can attend a physical meeting of the Board of Supervisors. To quote the Board of Supervisors' mission statement, "The county Board of Supervisors will recognize the public trust it holds, will on all occasions conduct business with honesty, integrity, and respect for the individual." The format of the meeting requires participants to have high-speed internet on a computer in order to use a Zoom application. This requirement excludes large numbers of the public who may not have access to broadband or who may not have a computer. County residents, the public that puts their trust in you, have a right to participate meaningfully in the public hearing process. The C1 rezon of Vettabel is not an emergency, so it should be postponed. That is it.
Thank you.
To the Chair.
I think we've got a couple more people that would like to speak. Do you have anyone else?
We do.
We have to state your name, your county of residence for the record.
Supervisors, to postpone any decisions or deliberations on the proposed rezoning consideration, weighing the magnitude of the historic challenges we all faced due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the impact it has had on the public's ability to participate in local government, I encourage the county to make the only practical decision here. That would be to delay the matter or on the side of only considering items that are absolutely essential to our day-to-day operation and keeping the county functioning to the best of your ability while responding to this crisis. Again, consideration of this highly controversial land use issue is nowhere near essential at this time and would lead to less participation from the public than otherwise expected. And I would just add that this has been really the biggest problem from the start of this, going back to 2015. You know, the lack of public engagement and allowing participation in the process. And I do think this would be a slap in the face if we move forward on this today. I think it should be delayed at least a month. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll close the public hearing.
To the Chair, I'd simply like to point out that all of the emails and letters that have been sent to the Board are part of the public record. It is not necessary to read them for them to be included in the public record. And I don't know whether the Chair is intending to close the public hearing or whether or not it is to be continued for additional testimony at a future date.
Yes, if the Board wishes to continue, we will, in the motion, that will be part of the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we closed it for today. All right, what's the pleasure of the Board? Actually, Supervisor Gilio?
I'd like to make some comments. Again, today I support continuing this to April 21st so we can have more time with our technology. There may be a chance on April 21st that we are in the same situation we're in now. There's no end date to this. That's why I'm suggesting a specific date. I'm open to other dates if the Board has other ideas. We've seen some technological challenges today. I don't want to jeopardize this project any further, and now I'm going to state a few things that was brought up in public comment and that I would like to address, the reasons why I support this project. 86 of the 112 acres will continue to be farming, and it's been committed to actually be organic farming. There is no housing, I'll say that three times, no housing, no housing. That's three times in this area. And the facts are that we are in desperate need of economic development. There's going to be, potentially, that we're going to work our hardest to do the best to get a CFD implemented so that not only do impact fees cover any initial costs to the counties, whether it's through reimbursement agreements for planning, whether it's impacts on any potential traffic, whether it's impacts on law enforcement, whatever that may be, those initial costs will be covered. However, ongoing CFDs will cover any future costs. If you haven't been out to the Vettabel property for the folks that are commenting from other counties, I recommend you take a drive-by there, look at Google Maps. This area has been used for commercial in the past, and it's currently being used as a RV park now, right next door. So it's very apparent that there was commercial there, it was intended to be commercial there. There's an off-ramp and an on-ramp. And again, those are the reasons, a few of the reasons, there's many more, by the way. Again, SEQA will need to be done, I'm going to say that three times again, SEQA, SEQA, SEQA. We're going to have to go through that as a project is proposed and an application is submitted, and everybody that is concerned about the project or cultural resources or water will have an opportunity to participate in SEQA as normal, that's not going to change. The only thing that I'm asking our Board today is, due to the exceptional, rare circumstance hopefully in our lifetime we'll never see again, that we continue this to the 21st so we can have more time with the technology, educate our community that you don't need high-speed internet, you don't need an app, you can call in and talk on the phone, more education, and that's, those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Mark Medina?
Barbara, would you mind addressing, there are several allegations made by public speakers that we are violating the Brown Act by not having a physical place of presence, and I know that the Governor amended their executive order. There was one, and if you could address that, I would appreciate that so we can put that to rest.
Right, I can understand how people believe that because the first executive order did indicate that there had to be a place that was accessible to the public that was open, but then the Governor did modify that through a subsequent executive order, which allows places of meetings to be closed to the public and that they may be available entirely by teleconference and still meet the requirements of the Brown Act. And also, I should note that we were able to hear everyone on the phone clearly today, and I just, I didn't, everyone that was providing public comments, we were able to hear and understand.
In order that we actually went beyond regular Zoom, like someone calling on our cell phone to make sure that their opinion was addressed to. Supervisor Mark Medina?
Yes, I want to reiterate what Supervisor Gilio stated, is I am for the project, and I'll say it up, you want, I'll say it four times. No houses, no houses, no houses, no houses, SEQA, 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 SEQA. So we are following protocol, we are following procedures. And the only issue at hand, and I've spoken about this forever, and I know everybody's getting tired of hearing it, is just timing. I'm asking April 21st. I will personally educate everyone I can on calling in, on Zoom, and I would ask the Chair, also legal counsel, along with our CAO, if I look out here, and I do see some open chairs, if we can have a certain amount of public here. Of course, having the distance and not knowing what's going to happen in four weeks to a month, it's all dependent upon everything else. So, you know, I'm looking at it once again from a practical point of view. I'm also looking at, you know, when people are saying this is pork, and I'm making decisions based upon pork, it's not pork at all. This is 60,000 residents that I was, that voted or that I'm in charge of to make sure that it's safe. And me educating everyone on what is transpiring is the most important part for me, so that's why I'm asking for another month on number two. But on number one, I don't have a problem whatsoever because I think that was the intention to begin with. So thank you for your time. I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Supervisor Medina. Supervisor Telo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank our staff. I know they worked very, very hard yesterday to make sure we had our act together with this Zoom technology. I thought it was fantastic today. The feedback that I've gotten from constituents, that it was uninterrupted, it was fine, and it works. And so, but that took some work on our end to make sure that we're able to convey all the information and hear from the public in these proceedings. As I stated earlier, I'm very much in favor in moving ahead with both resolutions today. I see a very deep hardship on local government for us to provide services if we don't increase our revenue. We've had this problem before the coronavirus. This is economic need that we have well established long before this crisis, and by delaying, it just delays the time period in which we are able to move ourselves out of it and provide for the services that the county expects and the working environment that our employees deserve. This is a zoning effort. This is a beginning of a very technical process for the applicant, and we don't know what the project is until it comes before our
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank our staff. I know they worked very, very hard yesterday to make sure we had our act together with this Zoom technology. I thought it was fantastic today. The feedback that I've gotten from constituents, that it was uninterrupted, it was fine, and it works. And so, but that took some work on our end to make sure that we're able to convey all the information and hear from the public in these proceedings. As I stated earlier, I'm very much in favor in moving ahead with both resolutions today. I see a very deep hardship on local government for us to provide services. If we don't increase our revenue, we've had this problem before the coronavirus. This is economic need that we well established long before this crisis. And by delaying, it just delays the time period in which we are able to move ourselves out of it and provide for the services that the county expects and the working environment that our employees deserve. This is a zoning effort. This is a beginning of a very technical process for the applicant. And we don't know what the project is until it comes before our planning staff and they're working out the ins and outs through the SEQA. A lot of times, these things change. And we're just talking about zoning here. This has been being worked on for better than two and a half, three years already. This property has taken a number of delays for multiple reasons, and it's not fair. It's just flat not fair to the property owner. You know, we talked about agriculture in our deliberations a little bit, and with the two zonings and the overlaying of C1 over the agricultural. I want my colleagues on the board to note that this is not AP5, agricultural prime farmland. This is agricultural rangeland, which is very marginal ground, very marginal. And a better use is commercial. That's why there's an overpass there, on ramps, off ramps. And predecessors long before us have seen that the value there is not for agriculture. We have an opportunity to, you know, have a project that probably will not take up the entire 29 acres. That's just the usable area for a project. But also, what we're going to have is the opportunity to clean up the Paul Row, have open space, whether it be used for some sort of agricultural opportunities or public type of access. And that comes at a cost. And I think Supervisor, I mean Chairman De La Cruz and I have served long enough. This county has worked hard to preserve the environment and open space in our agricultural lands. But it comes at a cost. There's a cost to it. And we just had some lands dedicated, 2,500 acres at the Rocks Ranch for Habitat. And it's noble. It's what we need here and to preserve into future generations what's important for California. But there's a cost, a cost to local government in the tax base. And we got to find other ways to make up for that loss of income. When things go into conservation easements, and that has a direct impact on county coffers. And a lot of times, we've expressed that concern, especially when we're the third-ranked lowest property tax recipient in the state. That's why our roads are crumbling. It's not because of the growth of Hollister. It's because we don't get the revenue that a lot of other neighbors have. And, you know, as far as the sacred lands and all that, I think all of us are respectful. But let's face it, this property specifically had a number of illegal operations. They had meth houses, illegal cannabis. Over 200 cars were taken out of there. Tons and tons of garbage was hauled out of Paul Row River. And I just wonder where these people that have the sacred lands sympathies were on those cleanups. And how are they going to help us in the future to clean that up? It was a dump. And I hope all of us could work together to enhance the environment, protect what we need, but also recognize the property rights of these individuals that pay the taxes. And what I would like to suggest to my colleagues, because I understand the concerns about the access, is April 21st is too far out, too far out. That's a whole month. And if, I'll support, you know, a lot of times, these ideas come from my friend Supervisor Gilio as far as reaching a consensus and a compromise, something that's more like in two weeks. Have another special meeting on, which day?
April 7.
April 7. And have another meeting, public hearing, public could certainly phone in. And I think that's fair. That's something I feel comfortable with. This property owner has done what he could do. And that's my suggestion to my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the sake of trying to find that common ground, I would support the motion of Supervisor Patel. It's honestly a hard tail for me to swallow. And I value extremely the, you know, the public ability to be able to engage and to thoroughly understand the details of this. I feel like there's been a lot of opportunities for that. I feel like there's been a big focus on making sure that we're not only entering common to the record, but even making sure that there's enough time for folks to be able to, you know, enough opportunity for that engagement process to happen. So one of the things that I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chair, is to enter into the record, if we may, the statements that I've made are consistent with really ultimately trying to focus on having a healthy dialogue and honest dialogue with the public. And one of the speakers mentioned that it was demagoguery, and I don't know where that came from. Nonetheless, two friends, they came into myself, again, to enter into the record, two friends came into my shop and both told me that they were opposing this because of housing. And I said, look, I basically explained to them the whole element. And I said, yes, it does allow for housing in the zoning. So I wasn't myself misrepresenting, I was truthful. And once they heard the whole element, they changed their mind. And they were upset. And I believe that is a sentiment that is growing, is people that are paying attention or are starting to now pay attention more, they're even more and more upset about what they were sold and ultimately what they're not being delivered or the information that was out there. And that's why I'm strongly supporting this project, and I wish we could vote on it today. But another element that I wanted to ask the board, and this is with all due respect, is it essential to generate revenue? And I would like to see if there was actually any kind of, you know, financial impact done. I mean, I don't think it'll take very much. But for us to know what did COVID-19 do to our general fund as of late, and what do we project it to do? And from that point of reference, I'd like to know what does every, you know, what do the reserve our rural community folks, what solutions can they bring to basically increase the revenue? Or what can the county, basically, all I'm saying is, what is the solution that we're going to have? They're opposing this project. What solutions are we going to have to now somehow try to create a stability to our local economy and make sure that we're not shrinking back services, vital services, which is why I don't see, I see a contradiction in the argument. Because if we're saying that we want vital services, but we don't want extra money, or we don't want to generate more revenue, I'm trying to connect those two different statements and make a cohesive statement, because I don't see it. All I see is contradiction in that, and that we're not really supporting our local economy. We don't have a game plan to support what this impact are, you know, coming into play with to our local economy. I don't see that coherence. And that's why I question all these statements. And that's why I feel like we need to do a whole lot more homework on the implications of this, instead of just saying, let's kick it down, you know, kick the can down the road. That's not solving the problem today that we have today. And to a certain extent, it's making the problem worse because we're just ignoring the problem and pushing it down the road. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Hernandez. My comments, my comments are, are the voters, by 60, by close to 60% said no to Measure K. I also believe it's the right, the wrong, I apologize, it's the wrong timing today to move forward with this project. I think that we need to have a more public input, more opportunity for the public to talk to us. I know we have this Zoom, this technology in place, but I just feel that kind of limiting the ability for more folks to participate. And I just feel that there's some other issues that we need to address, such as any additional public services that will be required out there. I don't think it's going to be able to generate enough money to offset those dollars. Those are my opinions, and just my opinions. And I will not support any delay in this. I think we should push it maybe in a couple more months. But that's just my opinion. Supervisor Mark Medina?
I'd just like to follow up with two new things that I've heard. The first one is Measure K. This is not Measure K. Measure K was 16 nodes. Measure K was homes. Measure K was alligator ponds. Measure K also had a water park. This is one business, roughly 29 acres. So Measure K, this has nothing to do with Measure K. Just make sure we're clear on that. Secondly, Supervisor Hernandez, you know, when you're speaking of contradicting each other, we're not, I'm not contradicting anything. What I'm saying is, we need to listen to our people, we need to educate our residents. We're speaking two weeks. Two weeks. We're not speaking of two years. We're speaking of two weeks. So if the project is great, it's going to even be better in two weeks because we can possibly get more people on board, we can educate people on how we're meeting, and then we go forward. So the contradiction is not, we do not want economic growth. And I'm speaking for, not trying to speak for Supervisor Gilio, but when we're looking at this, we're just talking about educating people and coming back in two weeks and moving forward. And I feel much better knowing that I did that. Thank you.
Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I agree with everything you said Supervisor Medina. And I'm assuming that we should still move forward with the first resolution establishing the agricultural rangeland zoning.
Yes. Thank you Supervisor Patel. Supervisor Gilio?
Yeah, I just had a question for Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, does, if we're able to compromise and reconvene on April 7th, our next regular board meeting, is that enough time for you to do everything you need to do in the clerk world to continue this and do all the things we need to do?
We're going to continue to a date and time certain so that we don't have to renotice it.
I saw some whispering, and I just wanted to make sure that we weren't leaving the clerk out or maybe having any potential problems in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I was going to ask whoever makes the motion to include the time certain and that we're going to continue the public hearing. So?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes Supervisor Medina?
My motion is ordinance of the San Marino County Board of Supervisors to repeal ordinance 992 and restore agricultural rangeland zoning, floodplain combining district ARFP for assessor parcel numbers 13, oh, 013150017, 013150018, 013150023, and 013150024, and 013150025, county file plan 190060, Beddable Road.
And if I could clarify that motion, that's also to approve the resolution regarding the SEQA, correct?
Yes.
If I, I'm second with the friendly amendment that we continue the discussion of the, no, I take that back. I'm just second.
Yeah, okay, second. Any further discussion? And just for the record, for the public input, we are only approving the changes of C3 to Ag Zone.
Correct. And you have to do roll call.
And then roll call.
Resolution 2020.
And the resolutions attached and the AP's numbers as stated by Supervisor Medina.
So it's going to be the resolution number, I don't know the number, plus 2020, and then ordinance number?
1006.
1006.
Which repeals ordinance 992.
992. Correct. Okay, roll call?
Gilio?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
No approval?
No.
Patel?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Supervisor Medina?
Oh.
Or Supervisor Patel?
We'll let Anthony have it.
Okay, Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I guess we'll, I'll make a motion to move the, this public hearing, continue this public hearing to April 7th.
At nine o'clock?
To receive further public testimony and consider adoption of draft ordinance 1007 to approve the zone change petition filed, county file number PH190060, Beddable Road, and rezoned portions of the parcels described herein to include the commercial thoroughfare with C1 combining zone district.
Is that at nine o'clock?
Pardon me?
April 7th at 9:00 AM?
April 7th, 9:00 AM.
Is there a second?
A second with discussion, Mr. Chair.
Yes Supervisor Gilio?
I just want to be clear what my expectations are and where we're going to land. So if we have another closed meeting, I still intend to continue forward. My plan is to, in between now and the next two weeks, I'm sure we'll have a couple more special meetings, and we'll be able to fine-tune and work on our technology and be more comfortable with this and have our community more comfortable with it. And I think I can agree with your compromise of dates, and I thank you for the compromise. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Medina. I'm sorry Supervisor Medina?
Same words with Supervisor Gilio. April 7th, we will discuss and we will vote on this measure or this change. Also, in the meantime, my number is 831-801-4784, looking for any type of people to call me with some feedback. My email, medinadistrict1@gmail.com, looking for any type of feedback. Want to make sure that we're transparent, we're talking about this for the next two weeks. We should live and breathe this, along with taking care of our community on the coronavirus. And thanks to Tracy out there that is our person that's taking care of the problems that we're having right now. But thank you for your time.
Thank you Supervisor Medina. Supervisor Hernandez?
Just keep it simple, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So I just want to be able to reiterate, we need answers, we need solutions for our community, not just mitigating the impacts, obviously protecting the public health, that always comes first, but also considering the other elements that will protect public health, and that's having a healthy general fund and having healthy reserves and funding to support the needs of keeping staff employed, keeping health and human services, funding coming in to support the needs of our local hospital and mitigate the impact of this, and ultimately have a long-term game plan to restore our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Before I ask for vote?
Mr. Chair, if I could have one comment?
Sure.
You know, and, you know, I think all the comments that we've made as a board really still emphasizes the emphasis of economic development. And we know how hard it is down there at planning sometimes. And I hope that the day comes, whether this project or other projects in the county, we find how streamline these type of job creation, business creations applications, I mean streamline them, and get them through the process and get them approved and online, because that's what this community needs. And this is what the county needs. So I wanted to throw that in there, too.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Patel. I won't support this motion. I think it's, April 7th is way too early, but that's besides the point. Roll call?
Gilio?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
No approval?
No.
Patel?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yeah.
Motion carries, we'll have an April 7th, 9:00 meeting for the second part of the motion. Thank you. Now we'll go to regular agenda, and we'll hear update from Tracy on coronavirus 19.
Good morning. So I'm here today to present you just a brief update on the COVID-19 status. Good morning. So I'm here today to present you just a brief update on the COVID-19 status. I prepared a small PowerPoint just to give you some updates. We do have some updated data. We now have six cases reported in our county. Two recovered, one death, and three active. Of the three active cases, two are in home isolation and one is hospitalized. There's some current updated data on the state of California. The numbers are changing drastically and quickly, unfortunately, so shelter in place is super important. I'm not going to read off the numbers, but they are listed here on the PowerPoint. We will post this PowerPoint to our website as we did the last one. I know that data is really important to everybody. We're working diligently to report out data on cases. Just a reminder that there is confidential information regarding this cases that we cannot disclose to the public, but we do our best to report it. We're looking at our dashboards and seeing how we can change them a little bit more to be more informative. But as cases increase, our priority at the moment is not to report out the details. It's more to investigate the cases and ensure that the public is safe. The governor did put out another report yesterday. Here are some of the highlights from his update. He has deployed a Navy ship to Los Angeles. There's been $100 million in emergency homeless funding through our COCs. We got $5 million, that large number there. Some of it is designated to the county specifically, and some of it is designated to the COC, so we're going to be working with our COC to get that money moving quickly. Continuing to update models and looking to increase procurement for assets and beds. Ordered all state parks and beaches closed. He's- we're in phase one. The hospitals are to surge for 40%. Our hospital and our public health staff are meeting now, or they could be finished now, to talk about the possibility of a surge. And there's a bunch of other just updates that you can review. You know, he did again urge Californians to improve our behaviors and abide by the stay-in-place, shelter-in-place order, which is very important for us all to remember. There is a federal field medical station that is in Santa Clara County right now, so that was in the news as well. And when he was asked about testing numbers compared to New York, he indicated that the testing numbers would be reset on Wednesday and that the numbers would still increase, so we need to be very mindful of that. For San Benito County testing, I did break out some of the testing. So we have, two of our cases were travel-related. Three were person-to-person transmission, which means the contacts were either in home business or in a healthcare setting, and one is still under investigation. I did add some testing detail to the PowerPoint, but it's really important to remember that these aren't 100% accurate. We have 90 residents that have been tested. 65 have been negative and 19 are pending. It's hard for us to get every result of every test because there's several labs that test patients. There's patients that live out in our county but are tested outside of our county, and so we're just trying to be really careful on providing numbers because they could be inaccurate. And so if people can just remember when they're looking at these that there could be an influx or a decrease that we're not aware of, and so we're going to do our best to get this information on the dashboard, but just remember that it might not be 100% accurate. There was some revised testing guidance that came out from CDPH. They are shifting the testing to these five populations. So if you read through them, hospitalized patients who have signs and symptoms compatible with COVID-19, residents and staff of long-term care facilities, so our skilled nursing facilities, other persons who are at higher risk for severe infection, the people with compromised immune systems, residents and staffs of correctional facilities and other congregate settings with signs and symptoms compatible with COVID-19, and healthcare personnel with signs and symptoms compatible with COVID-19. So those are the top five priority groups that they have identified to be tested. They've advised that persons in these categories with mild illnesses should still contact their healthcare provider by phone to discuss the need for testing. Persons who have mild respiratory symptoms, who do not otherwise need medical care and who are not in one of the above groups should stay home and take care of themselves. Ill persons should stay home and stay away from others until they have been without no fever. And if they develop complications, they should then reach out to their doctor. And asymptomatic persons should not be tested for COVID-19. So this is a new drive from CDPH, and our county will be following the guidance. Just a brief update on our homeless services. We, as of yesterday, we had 13 female beds available and no beds available for men today. I got an update, and I think it said we had seven female beds and one male bed. So the shelter is on a first-come, first-served basis, and it is open 24 hours now, but I believe they have to arrive around 4:00 to check in for the first-come, first-served. We also just installed two handwashing stations outside of the homeless shelter so that the clients can wash their hands prior, and if they're congregating outside, they'll have access to that. We talked last time briefly about some, securing some motels. One of our deputy directors, Enrique Areola, met with the Weeby Motel yesterday about leasing a block of rooms. We're still in discussion, and he should be meeting with them today to further that. Also, we will be discussing with the city, the mayor and the city manager, some information about possibly a sprung structure, and hopefully the city will be taking the lead in that. And then there were also other sanitation stations that were placed at the migrant center up on Southside Road and to make it accessible for the farm labor community as well.
A question right there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. There was a rumor circulating around San Juan Batista that we were looking at the Posada Hotel for, as a homeless shelter. Is that true or accurate?
I have not heard that. I would say it's a rumor.
Well, you know, they deserve first-class accommodations. What the heck? I'm happy with the efforts that you're doing with the Southside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Tracy, I got a question. Those individuals that refuse to go to the shelter, are we doing anything? Because they have the potential to carry the virus too, and so are we just- you don't want to come to the shelter, therefore we're just going to let you roam the community?
So the shelter in place order does not apply to homeless. It does allow them, but it asks them, it urges them to find shelter, and it urges them to practice good hygiene. So we haven't done much as far as outreach, because it puts people, other people at risk. But some of the communities or nonprofits that are outreach, like my father's house is delivering meals, they're urging them. We've placed handwashing stations out there for them, so other than that, there's not much more. Hopefully, you know, I've actually talked to two of them that hang out at Dunn Park and offered them the shelter. They just don't enjoy it, and they don't want to go there, and we can't force them.
And then I actually talked to Linda, which is, what's it called? My father's place?
My father's house.
Yeah, thank you. And she's dying for supplies and financial assistance. Is we, are we, the county, doing anything to support and help organizations like hers? Because I know through Supervisor Gillio's efforts, we allocated $1 million for coronavirus. So are we going to be, and I guess more question for Ray too, are we going to be able to tap into those dollars to help the nonprofit organizations in the community?
I think that money is being managed through Chris, correct? So I'm not sure. Ray, maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, so it's up to your board. I think the, and Supervisor Gillio can elaborate. He's the one that made the recommendation, but it's really to address our, the PPEs, the issues that we have with our county, as well as our county in general, residents and any, anything that is needed, up to $1 million. So especially, I think, with the nonprofits. I think we noticed there was an issue at the food bank last weekend, Friday. The days are becoming a blur. I think there was, you know, cars parked. It was a huge loop, and it really kind of looked like there might have been a safety issue there that we might want to address that for them or something that we could, we can address potentially, you know, hiring a firm, giving them some money so they can hire somebody to actually take food out. To, it's just a suggestion, but those are the things that we're looking at. I know internally staff's been working on to address some of those needs.
Okay, thank you.
The county, as well as the city, is working on the shelter in place nonessential business enforcement. Our agencies have received numerous calls about nonessential businesses open. We actually have a meeting today to address possible violations and develop a plan for future enforcement. It's really important for nonessential businesses to remember that they are to be closed for business. There's a purpose behind the shelter in place. I know it is really hard for these businesses, but it is important that they follow the stay-in, shelter-in-place order. We will be working with our code enforcements, and they will possibly be going out and talking to some of the businesses to advise them that they need to be closed.
Okay, I got a question on that. My understanding is, and it's kind of funny because my son go- actually, my son brought it to my attention last night. He goes, "Hey Dad, did you know that I actually could get a pizza and get a martini or a beer to go?" And I go, "What?" He goes, "Yeah," and I go, "Wow, I didn't know that." So by us putting these requirements or these enforcement in place, do we hold some potential liability if somebody gets, you know, somebody underage drinks or gets into an accident because they able to get an alcohol from a business establishment? It's just a lot of things started just crossing my mind when my son told me that.
I can address those things. So that's actually a state law, ABC Relaxos regulations on that. So it has nothing to do with our own county ordinance. And just kind of to backtrack to the nonessential businesses, I put a phone call into the city, and it sounds like we're going to work together. We're going to confirm that today at the meeting, but they're going to provide resources. We'll provide some resources, and really it's going to be an education process for these businesses.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I have a-
Supervisor Patel?
Thanks. You know, talk about the nonessential businesses. I had a call this morning. You know, and this is a little confusion for me too, to be honest with you. I think we all received a letter of a request from some sort of building trades organization. I don't know if it's the builders or the unions or who, but in any case, they were asking our board to consider amending our shelter in place ordinance to essential services for home builders would be exempt. Do we have a, I think the state has a different position than we have, and whether or not we should, you know, kind of solidify our regulations with the state regulations. And, and maybe if we leave it where it is, I know there's some construction activity in Sound 1, and when the guys get off duty or have lunch, they congregate at the Windmill Market and buy sandwiches, and, you know, social distancing is kind of compromised. And so is there enforcement action that we should be considering? Or what is our position on that?
So I believe that our shelter in place allows construction. I'll have to review it again. There's so many in there, but I believe it does allow construction. I think it is an essential function, so they would be fine. The next question is, should they be gathering at the Windmill Market to eat? No, they shouldn't, because that's for all of us, right? We should be not gathering, and they should be social distancing. So if they grab their food and go sit somewhere and distance from each other, I think it's fine. The restaurants are allowed to provide the service, the takeout service, and we're looking more at nonessential businesses more than restaurants. And so, you know, more to come. We have to, we're going to talk about it today. You know, we're just getting overloaded with calls on people, the community reporting people because they're concerned that these businesses are functioning, as well as businesses calling and saying, you know, "Am I allowed to have my business running?" So we meet today at 1:00. We have a call. And so hopefully we will be able to define more and work with the businesses to make an advisement to them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's it. Same resource-
Oh Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, and I know it's a little bit on the confusing side of it. And obviously, I'm a small business myself, and, you know, we have food or we have, you know, certain things that are considered food, but we do also deserve. Either way, you know, I know with our business, we've had to come up with some really tight measures to not allow people basically to convene in our place. So we do only basically delivery and, you know, delivery and, you know, curbside pickup. So we try to discourage folks. I mean, ultimately, you know, there's other businesses also that are able to do things that create that separation, which is a big element, right? That social distance, exceed distance. So I'm just wondering if part of the consideration could be, and not to, not to obviously violate the nonessential, but at least stressing maybe the measures, ultimately, that the people are making the healthy decisions on how to protect the public, which is the CDC recommendation. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez. Okay, any other comments before I open up to the board?
Yeah, sorry about that. We have a little bit more with the presentation, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to highlight a couple things. I'm going to invite up two people as well. So as you have seen today, we've made huge strides with the technology. We're still working through that. We plan to purchase more technology mics. As you saw, we had a Deuce Alonso and Edgar Nolasco are designator runners to move the phone back and forth. So then that way, the public can actually hear that because, you know, the charging capabilities. But we do need to buy some more tech, some drop mics or some other tech, so that way the public can actually hear a little bit more clearer without us running back and forth. So, so there's still some work that needs to be done, but I think we're getting a lot closer to actually having a really good functioning Zoom meeting with the public. With that, I have Edgar here as well. He's going to go ahead and discuss with you the website, and then also our PIO can say a couple comments after.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. I'm happy to announce we've made a lot of changes to our website. Just want to give big thanks to our PIO with his ideas, and our IT team, they moved quickly on this. We were able to put our Nixle up here. As you see, all of our alerts are here, and members of the public can sign up here very easily. So any press releases or any information that is readily available for the public is now on our website. Also, as of minutes ago, we secured a domain name for the public to quickly access our dashboard. And it redirects- around that. Should work?
Always got to test it first.
It worked right now.
It's probably blocked because of the permissions.
See? It's probably blocked. So what it does is we secure the domain name, and it redirects folks to our dashboard. So if you try it on your phone, SBCCOVID.19, I'll send the link, and it should redirect members of the public and people to our dashboard, which is on our HHSA website, on the coronavirus site. So should direct people here, which IT was able to embed this. So big thanks to IT on all their support with this. So I'll, we'll put a press release out there for members of the public, for everybody to use a new domain name. What it should do is it should open up to this here on screen to members of the public, and people can quickly access our information using a domain name that we just established.
Great. David, David Westrick?
Thank you very much, David Westrick, your new county PIO. A couple of things this weekend, this week that we've done. Supervisor Gillio, I'd worked on the push messaging, and Chris over in OES and I are trying to get a handle on that. There is some complicated issues that need to be worked out, but we are working on it. We also established this last week, of course, you know, our reports before, our own Nixle through OES and the county- We also established this last week, of course, you know, our reports before, our own Nixle through OES and the county. One of the things we can actually do with that is make specialized groups. We're doing that now and those specialized groups would be employees, could be folks that we need to notify for our emergency operations center, could be you folks up there on the dais as well, okay? So we're still kind of working that out. The, the idea being that we want to get information out to the public as quickly as we possibly can. We also need to go through the process of vetting that information as well. The dashboard is a great tool. We'll continue to update that. I want to thank the staff that put that together. Always thanking Public Health for all the great information they put out as well. And it really helps me do my job. Done a number of interviews with local news and national news. I think we're in line with what other communities are doing all over our nation. The idea being is that we want to push the messaging that we want to continue with all the guidance the CDC is asking us to do with washing your hands for 20 seconds with soap. All those things are asking us to do. We want to keep pushing that out there. So members of the public and, and the board, please continue that messaging that we're putting out, that guidance from CDC. I'll take any questions at all.
Thank you. I don't know if it's a question or a comment, Supervisor Gilli.
Yeah, sure, you can stay up there. PIO Westrick, thank you. Just a couple of things happened over the weekend. I learned that our hospital staff is short on PPE testing and ventilators. We, we not only learned that over the weekend, we learned that at our last special meeting here. I think it was on, was it Thursday or Friday? Friday morning with Dr. Bogie. So any conversations that our elected officials or our team members are having out in the community, if you happen to run into somebody who's looking to donate PPE items or has these items, please think of the hospital and think of our healthcare providers and think of our team members that are on the front line first. We also learned of some private companies that were lobbying to make sure that these donations end up in San Juanito County. I saw this today or yesterday that the National Guard is in our two neighboring counties helping at food pantries. I'm really hopeful that we can lobby the, the folks, perhaps through Assemblymember Rivas's office, to get National Guard here to help our pantry as well. Again, strictly humanitarian efforts, but it would be great to have more folks available. We had through Supervisor Medina, he doesn't like when I say nice things about him. I try not to as best I can, but he was out at the food pantry on Saturday packaging up and handing food with several of our county team members. And I thought that was a really positive message that you're sending out there with your community involvement. Thank you, thank you for doing that. Some of the things I, I think we need to start documenting and paying attention to, I sound like a broken record on this a lot, is our, our EOC capabilities, our EOC technology, our EOC preparedness. We, we need to start documenting any potential issues or improvements that we can make for the future. The best thing I think we have is our team members and our staff. I think some of the weakest things we have is our technology and our resources that we've dedicated to this over the last several years. So as we're going, I hope we're keeping a, a running list of the issues that we need to correct and correcting the immediate issues as we can. And as this national pandemic emergency subsides, hopefully sooner than later, we can address the long-going issues and have our EOC be a model for our community and our region. And with that said, I will yield back to the chair.
Thank you Supervisor Gilli. Did that conclude your guys' report? Okay, any comments from the board before I open up to the public? Do we have anybody from, from the public?
There was one.
Okay.
If any members of the public would just speak, please press star nine.
If you're on your mobile device, will I put my hand item up? Do we do have somebody?
Hi, good morning, Supervisors in the Health Department representative. This is Jackson Morris Wilber, San Juan County resident from San Juan, Batista. I was just interested in the aspect of what, when the county will actually be more proactive in getting the homeless off the street. I feel like Hollister in our county is a hotbed of potential covid virus risk in the population at large just by the mere fact that you do have the highest number of visible homeless folks on the streets and in the county areas and then unincorporated, the river, I U and such. And also the fact that you are the largest federal community in our county. San Juan being smaller and less pop, uh, population dense. I as a San Juan Batista resident, I've studied office for a long time, also being a healthcare provider and professional. I feel like we really need to be a little bit more aggressive with testing, with screening, with education, with enforcing the stay at home policy. These in Hollister is a hotbed of potential covid virus risk in the population at large, I U and such. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Done? Okay, all right, thank you very much. We'll close public, actually a break. On that note, at our next update, you, can you and Tracy make a brief presentation on what are we doing above and beyond to help the homeless in terms of the coronavirus?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to closed session, Barbara?
And you wanted to take off number 11, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Number 11.
Number 11 is going to be taken off the agenda. Number 12, close effort, closed session, conference with legal counsel, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation initiation, litigation pursuant to D4 of government code section five four nine five six point nine. Number of cases, one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public on closed session? Not, okay, we'll go to closed session now.